I call the public hearing and regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, January 9th, 2018 to order. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Crisik?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. First item is public discussion items not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything to bring forward? Would you like to bring some too? Step forward, your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Amy Butters, I'm at 23 Millington. And I'm here for my annual pitch for the Ferndale Schools Fine Arts Boosters Raffle, which is coming up February 3rd. And I have tickets here, thank you to everyone who've already purchased them. And if anyone else would like some, please let me know and I can set you up with one for 10, two for 20.
Sheesh, such a deal.
What a deal.
You are a giver.
Grand prize. Grand prize is $2,000, second prize is $1,000, third prize is $500. You need not be present to win. The drawing is on February 3rd, like I said. This raffle supports the Ferndale Schools Fine Arts Boosters, which is an umbrella organization that supports all the different fine arts programs in our district, which includes orchestra, choir, band, marching band, visual arts, all those, all of those programs. This is, this is where the money, the proceeds go to support all of those. You know, as an example, at our Pleasant Ridge tree lighting this year, we had our middle school choir there to sing for, for that event. And so that's just an example of one of the, one of the programs that this money goes towards. So, that's really all I have to, had to say today, February 3rd, like I said, is the drawing. It's also the All-City Concert, which is an annual event that Ferndale puts on every year. At the gym, at the high school, where you get to hear the band play, the orchestra and the choir. It's a really great event, so, you know, make sure to keep that on your calendars.
So are you the primary source of tickets? Are there any other?
Tickets can be bought, actually, if you go to FerndaleSchools.org and follow the links to the Fine Arts page, these are available online. You can purchase them online. Or, you know, there's a lot of us out there that are selling these tickets, a lot of the parents. So, and the push is on, you know, and so, I think Ferndale, you know, that, anywhere on Facebook, I imagine if, if there's parents that are selling them, they will be posting about it on Facebook too. So, yeah, there's a lot of us out there. And there, and it is really, it's, I want to say, I can't remember, there is a limit of, of tickets, it's, so it's a good chance to win, you know what I mean? So, because we're, we've got a winner in our midst from last year. You, you, you thought I wasn't even going to mention that, didn't you, Jason? But yes, Jason was, so he's looking forward to continuing that tradition.
Yes, very fortunate.
Did you see barbecue?
You did.
I can't remember which prize, it was the first or second prize.
It's a thousand dollars.
Yeah, see, that's nice. Congratulations.
Wow.
So it can happen to any of us.
He never told us. There's no party.
Yeah, now, you know, it's like those people who win the Lotto, you know, they don't want to let your friends.
Right, you need to be careful.
To become a financial advisor immediately and say, oh.
But of course, I do really appreciate all of the support of everyone here in Pleasant Ridge and on the commission, and you've always been very supportive of Ferndale School District. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amy, can I give you?
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other items for public discussion? All right. Move the next is governmental reports. Told you. And here we are. I think we have one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for singling me out. No other governmental reports showed up, so. So, good evening, everybody. Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everybody had a happy holiday season. Well, at the last meeting, maybe the prior one to that, you heard me talking about all the package stealing and everything like that off of the porches with the holiday season with everything. I'm happy to report that Pleasant Ridge didn't have one single incident of that, unlike many other communities around us. So, due diligence by the people that watch their neighbors and took their packages in, the police might have had a small hand in that with their diligent patrols, but I think it's information, yes, I followed many trucks around.
That's great.
So, happy to report that. And the holiday season was very quiet throughout for everything here in town, which is a good, always good. The only other things I have is, I just wanted to mention a couple of key things that two of our officers were involved in separately. First, Officer Andrew Shelton, as you may recall, months back, he was a recipient of the MAD, MAD Award, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award. Well, we submitted his application to a very prestigious program called Drug Recognition Expert Program, better known as DRAE. It's nationwide. He was accepted into that program. There's a lot of scrutiny with the application process, not everyone that is applied is accepted. In fact, he was denied one time, didn't meet the criteria, but with due diligence and his investment in that area of law enforcement, which he takes great pride in, which is an important area, he was accepted into the next upcoming program, which he starts in a couple of weeks. And what the DRAE program is, it's the top tier of the drunk driving pyramid. It entails vigorous training and is for highly motivated officers in the drunk driving enforcement. It offers academically challenging curriculum and it's developed to enhance an officer's ability to identify, evaluate and document suspected drug impairment, which is a lot harder to do than typically alcohol, which is the trend now with opiates and prescription drugs and everything like that. Typically, officers that successfully complete that training oftentimes become the leader in alcohol and drug impairment within their department and their communities. Like I said, not everybody's accepted. One of the keynotes is, it's, it's two weeks in Lansing of vigorous training and then shortly after that, you go to Maricopa County in Arizona, where you do, right? You do a week there of intense evaluation of these people. None of the costs affect us whatsoever, it's all paid for through a grant, other than the officer's salary time, but the travel, the lodging, the food, everything is paid for. So it doesn't cost us anything. And there are only, I think there's less than 100 of those officers in the state of Michigan. So it's a very prestigious thing that he's going to be able to go to, and it'll help our community. The other officer, Michael Kohlzar, he works the day shift, I've known him for 37 something, almost going on 38 years. On December 3rd, he was involved, he was working here, it was a Sunday, it was about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and Royal Oak had put out that there was a possible suicidal man a jumper at the bridge by the zoo. Officer Kohlzar was the first one to arrive there, managed to engage in conversation with this subject, who was intent, very intent on jumping off the bridge onto the freeway. Other officers had gone there, Huntington Woods and the, and the state police were on the freeway, and Royal Oak officers responded also. But Officer Kohlzar being experienced, he's been at it as long as I have, 37 years, engaged the man, got him to, he was intent on jumping, but Officer Kohlzar managed to just keep him distracted enough where a Royal Oak officer could run up, not being seen, and latch onto the guy, and then Officer Kohlzar grabbed onto him too, and they, they wind up saving this guy's life, who was intent on going. It was on WXYZ and in the paper, and I forgot the paper I had, I was going to show you. But it was. So, kudos to him too, just letting you know. Pleasant Ridge is a small community, they don't, they don't get a lot of the recognition larger departments do, but know that you have fine, I'm proud to work with them, you have fine officers that work here that are happy to serve here every day.
Plus, did you get, do you have special training for that, or has he had special training for talking, trying to talk down?
Most, you do, they say you do, but, like in anything else, I mean, the experience that you gain daily by talking to people, I mean, most police officers when they're new, it, I tell our newer people that, it takes about, I mean, I, I was new, raring to go at like 23 or whatever, and then went out the first day and was scared, didn't know, man, am I really ready for this? It takes about seven, eight years of doing it daily and responding to runs to where you feel, man, I think I've seen most things that I feel comfortable with. So and typically, it's about 21, 100 hours a year you work, so it's a lot of time before you even think you might know what you're doing. So, yes, I think it's more, you do receive limited training, there is an emphasis now on, in the mental health field, there's a lot more training for that, to be more, you have to be more sympathetic to people's needs and everything, and I think, you know, as we all get older, I speak for myself, because I'm older than all of you. You're welcome, Mayor. You just gain that patience and that knowledge to be able to converse with somebody about, just get in their head and see what's bothering them to try to help them through that situation.
Now you've got so many people that have been thrown out on the streets.
Yes.
You know, as far as mental health issues and things like that, there's just no treatment.
Serious area that needs to be addressed, hopefully that throughout the country that moves forward.
One other question since I got you, right? I told you, I told you. Have you been able, have you summarized the 2017 data yet for the city, as far as final numbers?
Oh.
And how we've, you know, as far as.
Oh, as compared?
The usual cast of characters.
It, it's in a pile somewhere, I'll have it for you the next time. But yes.
See, I have to defend this against Berkeley and, you know, when you get the safest city kinds of things, you know, I want to be able to.
I can have that for you before the meeting, if I'm allowed to leave from the podium here.
Okay.
All right. I'll go work on that right now.
If you'd like some data.
No, you can, no, right. Just curious. Anything? Any other questions? Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We spoke earlier today. Next, I, we don't have any other governmental reports, okay. We move on to city commission liaison reports, which I know will be quickly, but we'll go through them anyway. First, Commissioner Perry with planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission did not meet in, between now and our last meeting, but our next meeting is going to be on Monday, January 22nd at 7:00 PM, right here at City Hall.
Okay.
Thanks.
Commissioner Scott, story will begin soon.
Likewise, there was no meeting in December, so our next meeting will be tomorrow, actually.
Ah.
And then the next one will be March, we don't meet in February, so feel free to join us tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM at the Rexon.
Thank you. Commissioner Wall, recreation?
We haven't met either, but we're going to have our meeting.
Told you this would be quick.
It's a trend. January 31st, Wednesday at 7:00 o'clock.
Okay. And Commissioner Crisik, Ferndale Education Liaison.
Yes, I learned the school board always meets, so we will have an update. Wanted to let everyone know that I'll be filling the shoes of Jay Foreman, and he always did such a nice job, so I'll try to live up to his big shoes. There was a school board meeting on 12, December 18th. It was really well attended, there was some energy there, and there were student updates given by student representatives from both University High School and Ferndale High School. There was a good effort by the students. Rodra McLeur told those in attendance that they had a give back campaign for the community, and they had a coin tree competition, where all the students raised money to help local families and contribute blessings in a backpack. This was the student body, and they had a tree set up, and during the, this month of December, they raised over $600 for blessings in a backpack. That was all student run, so that was really inspiring. And that was followed by the Superintendent's Excellence Award, and this was a really extraordinary achievement by Ferndale High School student Jacob Keener. He was nominated by two of his teachers who spoke very highly of him, and he was given the Superintendent's Excellence Award because of some incredible achievements that he has had at Ferndale High School, including a perfect score on the SAT, a score of five in all of his AP classes, I didn't even know you could get a five. And one of the most inspiring things was his teacher gave a really heartfelt testimony, and they said that Jacob pushes others in his class, and on the cross-country team, of which he's the captain. He pushes others to think deeper and to give more, and he's viewed as a mentor to those around him. So that was very inspiring to hear about Jacob Keener, and my gosh, such a good recipient, recipient of the Superintendent's Excellence Award. There were also acknowledgements for the Eagles of the Month. This is something that they give away, that they acknowledge each month in the Ferndale School District Staff Awards. Arnel Rangel and Jody Casparo, Jody's at the Ferndale Lower School, and Arnel is a custodian at the high school, and they were recognized for their contributions to the district. Nothing but good praise for both of those individuals. There was also a nice segment called Building Pride, so we got an update on the Ferndale Upper Elementary School, and their focus for the, the school year is a school family. And this was another great initiative by the district to build school community. Every morning, they have a meeting to build community, and they go over the Fuel School Charter about being valued, happy, proud, motivated and safe, and they encourage the kids every day to be kind, be leaders and be fearless. This was another program that, you know, everybody there was very excited about, and I think it's, it's awesome that they're, they're teaching the kids in the district this social and emotional learning that is so important to creating, you know, good citizens. So that was also an exciting part of the meeting. The last, they closed up with Eagle Point of Pride, and I also wanted to mention this because there was, the middle school robotics team had their competition in December, and it was acknowledged that, I know PR resident Christie Stoll and other PR families were very instrumental in that, so there was an acknowledgement of that. So a lot going on, this was in the December meeting. The next meeting is Tuesday, January 23rd. The school board meetings are always the third Monday of every month at 7:00 at the main conference room at Ferndale High School, and you can get all the information about upcoming events. Oh, Bill Good, he's communications director, he did want me to mention, there's two open houses coming up, these are very important for prospective students. The preschool Ferndale Early Childhood Center is having their open house on Thursday, January 25th, that'll be at 6:00. And the kindergarten at Ferndale Lower Elementary will have their open house on Thursday, February 1st at 6:00. So those are all on the Ferndale website, if you're interested in attending those open houses, all the relevant information is there. So, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions, comments for anyone? All right, thanks very much. You did a well, good job.
Right, like I said, it's big shoes to fill there.
He's only a size 10.
Next item is the consent agenda. We have four items I just want to mention, I'm not going to read anything, but we have a resolution in honor of the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., which will be officially celebrated on Monday, January 15th, and proclamation recognizing January as volunteer blood donor month. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda to be approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Maybe we have a vote, please.
Commissioner Crisik?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Next item is the ordinance to amend Chapter 82 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code by the elimination of Section 82-197, parentheses B, parentheses 1, parentheses M. And we will have both a public hearing and then a vote, but Jim, can you just, we've talked about this, but can you just give us a quick overview?
The ordinance amendment is very simple. It would simply eliminate a line of text in the ordinance that prohibits gas stations from selling any kind of package liquor. Instead, if, if approved, the sale of packaged liquor, and that is wine and beer only, at a gas station would follow and be considered the same as any other retail store in the city. There are some restrictions in place that limit the time and the amount of that that can occur. Packaged liquor sales can occur between the hours of 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM currently under the ordinance. If approved, the owner, Sonny, the owner of the Sunoco Station would then have to request a special use permit from the planning commission to be able to do this. So this is step one in the process. Step two would be going back to the planning commission and asking them to approve the use formally. As part of that special use permit, the city will have to publish notice in the paper, at least 15 days before the meeting at the planning commission, and all properties, residents and property owners who are located within 300 feet of the Sunoco Station property will get direct mail notice of that meeting. So that would occur at a time to be scheduled in late January or early February, I believe. So, those are the highlights of the ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything that comes up either now or after the public hearing.
Jim, are there any other steps after that, after the, the other planning?
No.
Okay.
Sonny's gone, one more. Not another. Any other questions for Jim before I open? Okay. Open the public hearing, solicitation of comments. Anybody care to step forward? He always does. You actually.
I am going to get up today. Rob, Fairwood Rob, eat Fairwood. I support this, I can't see anything bad out of it. You're not going to go there and drink while you're there, you're not going to go and buy ice cream and have a beer while you're having your ice cream. You're going to get your beer and wine and go, so you need to support him.
You're not allowed to drink beer while you're having your ice cream.
But, I hope, I hope everyone supports him, I, it's good for the city, it's good for Sonny, it's good for the city. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Where's that free doughnut? Any other, any other comments? Okay. Close the public hearing. All right, now we move on to, do I have a motion to eliminate Section 82 dot 197, et cetera, et cetera? Do, can we, do we have a motion to approve the elimination?
Your Honor, I move that the ordinance to amend Chapter 82 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code by the elimination of Section 82 dot point 197, parentheses B, parentheses 1, parentheses M, be approved.
Is there a second?
Your Honor, a second?
Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, no, Mayor, I would just like to echo Rob's sentiments, and these are feelings I've, I shared with Sonny before the meeting, I feel like the Sunoco Station, by virtue of its location, is central to our community, but also, I believe, you know, in our daily lives, both, you know, for the convenience of the station, but also, especially in the summer, you know, when people congregate there, that Sonny has been, you know, a really good steward of that space for many years, and I personally trust him and his employees to manage that space in a way that is going to balance, you know, the, the opportunity to sell alcohol there, but also as a, the continuation of it to be a family space, having, you know, children riding their bikes, having, you know, the baseball teams there, I've said it before, it's something that, for me and for my family, I know for many other families in the community, you know, that's really become a rite of summer, of spring, is to ride up to York Station and, and get some treats. So, for me, having that stewardship is something that I feel confident will continue, and for that reason, you know, I'm comfortable supporting this change to the ordinance.
I totally, I totally agree. One of the longest-serving, you know, best businesses in the city, I think it's been, it's wonderful, so, all right. Any other, maybe we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisik?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Move it on to the next step.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sonny.
See you next week.
All right. Onto the planning commission. Next item is the ordinance to amend Chapter 82 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Section 82 dot 204, solar panels. Jim, one more quick.
Yes.
We don't have to see pictures?
Nope.
You've got them, okay.
If we need, I know, only if we need them.
We love your pictures.
They're the same pictures you've seen before, and they're the same ones that are in the packet, so we'll only refer to them if necessary. This is another item that the planning commission has been considering for probably going on eight months now, when the process started, I think it was last spring. The question being, should we allow for solar panels on houses where they're visible from the street? Currently, we allow for solar panels in the city, but only where they're not visible from the street. And as we've discussed, most of our streets run east and west, which means you have a north and a south facing facade on your house, and in our Michigan location, you need a south facing facade to have good solar access. You can do with east and west facades, but when you're on a north-south, or I'm sorry, on an east-west running street, you can't really put solar panels on a north facade of a house. So, the ordinance standards currently preclude a little bit less than half of our homes from really even considering adding solar panels in a reasonable manner. So the ordinance amendment would allow for solar panels to be visible from the street with some design considerations, most notably the fact that you would have to use all-black panels with all-black frames, all-black collector surfaces, so you wouldn't have the silver frames visible. It's something that helps the panels blend in and blend into the background a little bit. The biggest concern in a city like Pleasant Ridge, where almost the entire city is in a nationally designated or federally designated historic district, is the fact that solar panels are not common or not consistent with how the houses looked when they were first built 100 years ago. So we, we did spend some time polling the community and gathering input, and the input we got was a little bit less than two-thirds of respondents were in favor of allowing solar panels where they could be visible, and a little bit more than a third were not in favor. So, somewhere between 60 and 66% were in favor. And all those surveys and comments are available in the city commission packet. So we went ahead and the planning commission decided to, they would like to forge a head with developing an ordinance that would allow for these to be installed on homes where they're visible from the street. Some of the things we discussed were the fact that solar panels are something that attaches to, but does not fundamentally change the structure of the historic resource. You can pull them off, put a new roof on, it's like they were never there. It's not destroying or forever altering the historic house. So that's, that's an important consideration, I think, in a historic district. That's number one, are we being good stewards of the historic resources we have? Then the next consideration, of course, is the aesthetics, you know, do you like looking at it? And that's where I think you have, maybe the purists do not want to look at solar panels versus, I guess, the 63 or 2% that doesn't mind looking at them. So, we acknowledge and we know that that's a consideration in a, in a city like ours, and that's why we have some of these design standards that are in the ordinance. So that's, that's the highlights of where we've been and how we got here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the ordinance itself or anything else.
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing?
Mayor? It's just a small detail, on Section 3, where we say that the solar panels should be designed aesthetically a certain way, do we intend that to apply for ground-mounted solar panels as well as roof-mounted solar panels, such that the frame must match?
Yes.
Okay.
And the point there is that there used to be a cost difference, there's really not anymore. The only difference is that the all-black panels have a 90, they have 98% of the output that the ones that have the metal frames. And what I learned through this is the reason for that is just, it's a cooling issue.
Right.
The all-black frames get a little bit hotter and degrade the performance a little bit. So, in the interest of consistency, the intent is to go with all-black, no matter where they are.
Got it. I might have asked the wrong question. Do we consider the, the structure that the solar panels mount to on the ground as part of the frame?
Ah, yes, no.
Okay.
No, it's just merely the panel collector surface.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Jim?
Yes.
Have you been getting much, many requests and things for? Have you been getting much, um, uh, many requests and things for this yet?
We just recently approved our first permit, uh, for homeowners putting one of these on their garage. Uh, they are, um, on the south side of the street, so they are putting it on the south side of their garage where it will not be visible from the street. Uh, but yes, we, we are starting to get more inquiries, um, and we have issued our first permit for it. And that was actually about three or four days ago that we finalized that, uh, that permit.
Any other questions? Okay. Open the public hearing. Anybody have any comments on solar panels? I want to talk about this. Not even Rob. Okay. Close the public hearing. Then I'll turn it over to, do we have a motion to, um, amend the ordinance?
Your honor, I move that the ordinance to amend chapter 82 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code, um, section 82 dash two oh four, solar panels be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? All right, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries.
Awesome.
Good. All right. Next item is the annual meeting schedule for the following commissions, city commission, historical commission, planning commission, and recreation commission. Amy, can you just?
The annual meeting schedule is provided to all of you in your package prior to the meeting. It's also listed on the website if anyone's interested to see the exact dates. City commission meets the second Tuesday of every month at 7:30 here at city hall. Um, planning commission meets the fourth Monday of, um, quarterly at 7:00 PM here at city hall. Recreation commission, last Wednesday, 7:00 PM, community center, quarterly.
This wasn't telling you that.
Right. And the, um, the historical commission meets, uh, certain months. They take a break over the summer for July and August, and they don't meet in December. They meet at the community center, 7:00 PM, first Monday, first Wednesday, excuse me, of every month. Except for January, they're meeting tomorrow.
No meeting February.
No meeting, no meeting February.
Okay. Um, may I have a motion to approve the annual meeting schedule?
Your honor, I move that the 2018 annual meeting schedule for the city commission, historical commission, planning commission, downtown development authority, and the recreation commission be approved. We're gonna let it die.
What am I gonna do here? Uh, is there support?
Support.
Anybody want to argue this one? Is there any discussion?
We have discussion.
I'm against the first one, so, um, may we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, I just had, I know one of the conversations we had, I mean, just to, uh, round that out, uh, before we had a, a, a meeting schedule that filled the calendar pretty significantly, and we learned that it was harder for people to attend on a consistent basis and that, uh, it was harder even to attract people who wanted to serve on junior commissions and such. Um, and we talked about it a little bit, um, last year at this time. Um, it was something that, uh, I personally felt I'd liked having the more meetings, but in reality, because of attendance, we weren't even really able to fill that schedule. So I think this is a schedule that, um, balances, uh, the necessity of having, uh, the meetings, but it also gives our residents and the members of these commissions, um, the ability to, you know, prioritize and put these on their schedule. I would like to see, you know, um, someday where maybe we expand that again, but I think for the time being, and I think it's something that, um, Scott, especially with recreation, has managed fairly well. Last year, we had four meetings on the schedule. Um, it did come up at some point during the year where an additional meeting was necessary. We scheduled that meeting. People attended that meeting. The commission met. And, um, I felt like that really worked well. So, um, whereas last year I was a little more hesitant. This year I feel more comfortable going to the, to the four, to the quarterly schedule for these. And I would hope, you know, as we've, we're going to fill some of these positions now, I hope residents who are maybe considering, um, putting their name up for junior commissions next year, um, because we just went through this process of filling these junior commissions, please consider signing up next year because this schedule, I think, um, can accommodate a lot of lifestyles. I know it's hard to meet a meeting every month. Having a quarterly meeting, um, is a consideration that I hope the public and the residents would consider and come out and, and put their name up for some of these junior commissions next year. So, um, that's all I wanted to say.
That was a great entree into mentioning the junior commission, but before I, we have, um, had several, we have openings on, on each of our junior commissions, and so we have, um, now just, I will, I will announce who's, who's being added, who's being, uh, given the next term. But I just wanted to thank everyone who has applied, and I, and I think, uh, Jason's made a great point that the, the intensity or the number of meetings that you had to go to before was very difficult to be able to be there every month. And now that it's been pushed more toward a quarterly in many cases, um, we hope that people, more people will be involved. But we were very pleased with the, the folks who did put in applications, and we thank everybody who did, whether you got chosen or not. Um, so we, we consider the ones that got chosen the lucky ones. Yes, so others might not feel that way. Um, so without further ado, unless there's any, anybody wants to make any comments before I start reading through the names? No? Okay.
Uh, just that we had lots of great candidates, and it was, it's hard that we couldn't put everybody where they wanted to be. But thank you all for applying.
Yes, indeed. Okay. So, um, may I have a motion to fill the positions on first, the historical commission? Uh-huh, see, see, I'm the only one that put the names down. Nobody knows who in the heck we chose, right? But when I see it says mayor, I move, so I'm.
Mayor, I moved, I moved that the appointments to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission of Mr. John Wright, Don Daniels, and Eric Krogel, in full terms, terms to expire December 31st, 2020, to be approved.
Wow. I'm impressed. I haven't really looked at them. Is there, um?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Can we have a vote on that, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Wow.
Perry, those, those appointments have been approved. Now we move to the planning commission, downtown development authority. May I have a motion?
Your honor, I move that the appointments to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority of Ms., Ms. Christie McAuliffe, Mr. Tom Wilkinson, and Frederick McCoy to full terms to expire December 31st, 2020, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The appointments have been approved. Next, recreation commission.
Your honor, I move that the appointments to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission of Ms. Catherine Russell, Mr. Jeffrey Williams, and Mr. James Lehrer, to full terms, terms to expire December 31st, 2020, be approved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Third.
We're much better at seconding than we are making the motion. May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. And finally, we get to the Pleasant Ridge Board of Review.
Mayor, I move, uh, that the appointments of L. Katskowit, uh, Katskowski, I always get that one screwed up, sorry. And, uh, Thomas Troyer as alternate to the Pleasant Ridge Board of Review be approved.
Is there a second?
I second that.
May we vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, the appointments have been approved. Thank you again.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Everybody that's applying. We look forward to seeing you in the coming months. Next item is the city manager's report.
Yes, uh, short report. A lot of holidays and other, um, intervening non-work things in the last month, I guess, but, uh, one thing that residents may have noticed is some activity in Stevenson Park. Uh, that is a project that is being, um, funded and, uh, really forwarded by the Garden Historical, uh, Commissions and the, uh, Pleasant Ridge Foundation, who have provided funding for a new lighting project in Stevenson Park. So there will be lighting over there soon. All the underground, uh, infrastructure work is complete. Uh, they've got five-foot-tall cement bases that they've sunk into the ground and run all the conduit underground. So that was a little disruptive for a little while, but at this point, we're just waiting for the poles and the light fixtures to come in. So, um, expect some improvements in Stevenson Park soon. So that's good. And we thank those commissions and the foundation for the support of that project.
It's exciting.
What? That's it?
It's gonna be beautiful. That'll be great.
Can see.
Anybody have any questions for the city manager? Comments? Things you'd like to know?
Hmm, acquiring minds.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. And I just want to comment, I think this, we may have had leaf problems, but the snow is doing really well. The streets are long, especially when you drive around everywhere else.
Absolutely. That's great.
As usual, one of the best in county.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I dock my hat to Briarlar. They're doing a great job.
Very happy about that.
Yes, I'm sure you are. As soon as we uncover those leaves, we will, uh, then we move on to other business. Anybody have anything for Gooden Welfare, please?
Well, thank you, mayor. Just have the books. Uh, this is for tomorrow, Citizens of London by Lynn Olson. Um, this is a historical account of three Americans, um, who, uh, helped champion, uh, US involvement in the war, uh, in Europe. Uh, it's really, uh, behind-the-scenes look at, um, some things that maybe we're familiar with historically, but you don't really get a good sense of, uh, all the, uh, goings-on that led to the, uh, the entry of the United States into World War II, D-Day, all these crucial events in world history. Um, you know, these were events forged by very strong individuals. This, uh, book goes into who those individuals were. Um, so, uh, very enjoyable if you're interested in World War, if you're interested in history, uh, this is a great book to rap about. You can join us tomorrow at seven o'clock at, um, the community center. Um, this is the February book. Um, since our book club meetings are always the day after now, um, our city commission meetings, I just wanted to give people a heads up on February so that you get a, a head start on this one. Um, Colson Whitehead's The Underground Railroad, um, this is a fictitious account, um, but based in a, a, a transformative time in our nation's history. Um, it's come with a very, um, it's come very well-received by many observers, and it comes with Oprah Winfrey, um, 2020 Stanford approval on there, so, um, get a jump on that. No, but this book is, is really powerful.
So Colin Whitehead is running from the man?
Yeah, it's Colson Whitehead. Yeah, no, but, um, no, this is a very powerful book, and I encourage everyone, um, to come out for that one in February. And, uh, that's all I have.
That's it? Anybody have anything? You want to talk about the ridger?
You've earned a lovely, you've earned a lovely. Stay as a sitting.
Lovely, lovely. Um, just let everybody know, the ridger, I guess it hasn't arrived, has it arrived in our mailboxes?
It should be in your mailboxes. Um, we just received this shipment today, but they, they send them out.
Yeah, I think some, I think some houses got them today. We heard from people. This one's always tough. The way they get sent, when the post office gets them, it depends on if it's like a busy mail day or not, whether they give it to the carriers. So I, we heard from some people today that they got them, but everybody should have them, I would think, by tomorrow and at the latest Thursday, so.
And they've been available online.
They've been available online for a couple of weeks now, so, um, shouldn't have missed anything in there really with the, the first of the year and whatnot, but you should be getting them here hopefully by tomorrow.
And just to remind you, there's a lot of good information, so I recommend, it's a quick read, it's not bad, but.
It's invaluable.
It is, it really is, so keep it by your phone. Put it on your refrigerator.
There's a new 2018 magnet in there.
Oh, ah, yes. That, look at that. There's a new 2018 magnet, which amazingly could cut down on the number of people who write questions on Facebook saying, is the garbage gonna be picked up on Monday or Tuesday? It's not going to change a thing because it didn't the first time. But it does talk about the garbage pickup, all kinds of things, so I recommend that you look at it.
And now that garbage pickup is on Monday.
Monday, yes.
When in doubt, put it out.
There you go.
Mr. Cocker.
The worst thing that'll happen is it'll sit there at your curb for one day.
I'll keep that in mind. It's good advice.
If the garbage doesn't fit. Are there any other items? Is there, but I'm sorry, it's new year. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So move.
All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned.